Hey, Carl says he can't get in.
I'll send him an invite. I'll try to.
Okay, I can do that if you're bored.
Okay, please do.
Sure.
Well, the record is on.
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead and start. It's just the attendees won't be able to get in for just a little bit. If you want to go ahead and get started with the group that's here, that's perfectly fine. That's up to you, Mayor.
I think we had to get started.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Hey, Mayor. Did you want me to go ahead, Mayor?
Yep.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. So we have two topics this morning, the first of which is a presentation on our every two-year resident survey findings. The ETC group, we have Robert on the phone with us here on the Zoom call. So he'll be giving this presentation. I want to thank Paul as well for helping organize the survey this cycle and helping to put together the presentations. So we have quite a few questions many of you are familiar with that get asked every two years so that we can track how our performance is going, not only in our own progress to make sure that our trends are positive, but also against other cities because ETC brings with them a very large grouping of communities that they do the similar survey with. So with that, I'll go ahead and kick it over to Robert and I'll be also available for questions at the end. Robert?
Thank you and good morning, everyone. My name is Robert Haycock. I'm with the ETC Institute. I'm proud to and happy to be with you this morning to present the findings of this year's survey result. Excellent. As was alluded to, ETC has a large footprint and has been doing community surveys, different types of surveys, community surveys, business surveys, employee park surveys, you name it, all over the country for more than 35 years. For just the last 14 years or so, we've surveyed more than 2.2 million people in 900 cities in 49 states. This is the agenda for the presentation this morning. I'll try to go quickly, but I do also want to make sure we take enough time to delve into some, some of the points that we've talked about with your staff that are particularly important and impactful to your community. So we're going to go over the purpose, the methodology, bottom line upfront, the major findings, a summary, and then open for questions. Excellent. The purpose is to provide support to your department directors to help align existing resources to measure trends and to compare your performance with other cities as well as yourselves. Next slide. Methodology here is quite detailed. I'm not going to read everything that's on your screen. Our goal, I will say this year was 800 responses. We actually exceeded that by quite a bit. Thus, your margin of error this year was a plus or minus 3.3%. We also completed an oversampling of racial minorities, which is a report that is not part of this presentation, but is information that my understanding is your staff will be going over that with you. Next slide. Bottom line upfront for this year's survey is that residents are generally satisfied with the overall quality of services they receive from the city. Ratings for Des Moines are generally higher than the national average for cities of a similar population. You'll see that as we go through. We'll have slides that break out Des Moines' ratings compared to a list of cities that we compared you to. Improvements to police services, communication, street maintenance, community development, those four areas should be the city's top overall priorities if the city wants to see customer satisfaction ratings continue to improve. One thing that I'll say at this point is that as we go through, sometimes you will see a slide that says 20 compared to 2013 or 2016. That depends upon when we first ask the question. As was alluded to, we've been doing this for a little while back to 2013. And so if a question has been asked every cycle since that period of time, you'll see 2013. But if it was a new question starting in 2016, that's why you'll see the difference, difference there. I also want to point out before we delve into it going through that you will see some lag in some of the responses. You can't expect if, if we made a change last year in a particular program, can't necessarily expect that to pop up right away in terms of the, the responses from the citizenry. Sometimes it seems to take a while for things to kind of catch up with the improvements that the city is, is making. So even if there is a lower than expected rating in a particular area, it does not mean that the city hasn't already started to address that. But you, you have to be realistic. It's not always going to impact and show up right away. Next slide. So our major findings, what do the residents generally think of the city? Next slide. When we pick some key areas here, this certainly is not all of the areas that you can look at in the rather detailed report that we provided. The first area is question 24, are you satisfied with the appearance of private property in your neighborhoods? And here you do see some changes over, you look at the, the blue and we generally have a five-point scale. We have very satisfied, satisfied, neutral, and then two levels of dissatisfied. And so here you see in the blue, if the residents are satisfied or very satisfied, you'll see that highlighted in blue. You see some changes from year to year, but most notably, I would say from 2018 to 2020, you'll see a drop from 31% of dissatisfied to 24% dissatisfied and an increase of 10% in terms of the overall satisfaction of the appearance of private property in your neighborhood. So we'll go, see as we go through some of the specific areas that there may be aspects of appearance in private property that citizens still want to see more improvement. But the important thing is from a trend standpoint, you're moving in the right direction. Next slide. Has your neighborhood improved over the past five years? Again, you see significant changes from year to year from 2018 to 2020, a 7% increase in satisfaction and a 2% drop in terms of dissatisfaction in terms of have your, has your neighborhood improved over the last five years? So we do see some trends moving in the right direction. Next slide. Major finding number two, how does the city of Des Moines compare to other similar cities? And I should say before we go through this, when we say similar, you'll see some cities that are obviously larger and some cities that are smaller, but we've tried to stay in the Midwest, thinking that a lot of those same factors impacting you would be impacting those cities as well. Next slide. How safe residents feel in their community? You can see here, when on the left side of these slides, if you see a blue arrow, again, the blue arrow is good. We like blue. We want to see that. So the overall feeling of safety in the city. If you see a blue arrow, that means you're significantly above the comparisons that we're making of the national averages. So you can see in terms of how safe residents feel, 54% is the average nationally and 75% was the result for Des Moines. So you're quite a bit higher. That's something really, I think, to be proud of. It's a positive compared to a lot of other cities. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with police department services. Again, this is comparing your community to other large US cities. And we're not going to go through all of these this morning, but you can see there are no red arrows or where you're significantly lower and you have four blue arrows. Again, very positive. How quickly police respond to emergencies, you're at 69% compared to 55%. Overall quality of police protection, 68 to 59 and so on. Now, I want to point out, this doesn't mean that there are not occasionally customer experiences or resident experiences that are going to be on the lower side. But oftentimes we hear only from the squeaky wheels or those people that tend to say that their experience or one of some people that they know is indicative of the entire community. And that's one of the reasons we do the surveys is so that we can capture overall, what's the overall feeling of satisfaction amongst the residents in your community. Next slide. So here you see broken down the first time we've, we've let you gone through kind of the cities that we're comparing you to. Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, Kansas City, Nashville, Oklahoma City, Springfield, Missouri, and then Des Moines. So you can kind of see there, the, the average is in the yellow bar on the right side. And this is overall quality of police protection. And you can see how you rate, which is higher than all of the other cities there with the exception of Oklahoma City. Next slide. And this is overall satisfaction with fire services. Again, look at the blue arrows. Those are positives. Those are things where you are, areas where you are significantly higher than the US population. How quickly fire personnel respond to emergencies, overall quality of fire protection, and so on down the list, very positive, especially if you look at quality of fire inspection program, 72% compared to 38%. You've almost lapped the field in terms of quality of fire inspection program compared to others nationally. Next slide. And I want to point out the, the, the two slides are different. The national average is a national study that we do and that's of cities of a certain size and higher. This is a different layer, a different way of, of cutting that these, this is not the cities that are represented in the overall national survey. It's to give us a closer look, a more detailed look into the central US city, large, large city regional benchmarks. And again, you can see that Des Moines ranks very high, slightly above the national average. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with parks and recreation services compared to other large cities, every single category, you're significantly higher than others nationally in parks. So you're looking at not only the number and location, but you're looking at the overall quality of your parks. Staff there are really doing a good job and meeting the citizens' needs, at least when you look at it compared nationally, compared to other cities that presumably have a lot of the same challenges that you do. Next slide. This gives you that look across the board in terms of comparing to other cities. And again, you're high, in fact, you're the highest rated in terms of your regional benchmark cities that we compare you to. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with libraries. And I understand that this has been a point of emphasis over the last few years that the city has done a lot of work on, on improving libraries and investing in libraries in the community. It shows here, when you look at the overall quality of city libraries, well above the national average in terms of overall citizen satisfaction. Next slide. Overall quality of city libraries compared to others, again, at the highest in terms of looking at each city. Now you see fewer cities here because some of those that we compare you to don't on other, we wanted to be consistent and use the same cities across the board. But obviously not all of them have a library system like Springfield, Missouri, so we couldn't compare, use them in this comparison. But again, even without those, you're still higher than the others in, in the region that we compare you to. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with communication. This is the first time we do see a couple of, of red arrows. And again, that means significantly lower than the US population. But then we also see blue, blue arrows, which is above. And this is one of those situations where I understand that, where I was talking about the lag in response. You, you do see on the overall quality of cities website, lower than the national average. And yet there has been improvement made. A new website, I believe, was unveiled last year. And I would say even at 48%, that's a 4% increase from what it was in 2018. So you are starting to see some improvement, 4% increase in the two years, brings you to 48. But that should indicate or could indicate that you're moving in the right direction and hopefully that trend will continue. The more people tend to use the web for accessing information about the city and, and for getting connected with the right person to address their problems. Next slide. Overall effectiveness of city communication in 2020. Can you see almost right at the national average or the regional average of those we compare you to, those benchmarks at 45%? Next slide. Overall satisfaction with community development, how well the city is planning growth, significantly higher. You see the other areas where you are behind or lower than the national averages. And again, you have to look behind those numbers. There may be some improvements. It doesn't mean that the city isn't aware of it, isn't, isn't moving in the right direction, just that it hasn't shown up yet. Next slide. Overall enforcement of city ordinances. Kind of right in the middle, very close to the, the, the average there, 35%. And that's just one of those, those things. When you look at enforcement and I always talk about the cafeteria food of city surveys, that's, that's one of them. When you look at code enforcement, you look at streets, I, I call it the, the cafeteria food because it doesn't seem to matter what you do. You're always going to be on the lower side, but the reason we do comparisons is so you can see, okay, 35% rating may sound by itself just as, as a horrible rating, but when you look across the board at other cities, you see everyone else is struggling with the same. So enforcement of city ordinance is one of those items that always seems to rate low across the board. Nobody's out there with a 90% satisfaction rate, for example, with enforcement of city ordinances. Next slide. Now this is a little bit more difficult to see on your screen here, just because there's a lot of, lot of information, a lot of different categories, but we're looking at the overall satisfaction of public works and engineering. This is on the national scale, comparing you to other large US cities. And you do see, for the most part, a lot of blue arrows, again, indicating that you're significantly higher than the, those we're comparing you to, and then a few areas where you're below. We do see garbage collection, recyclables collection, yard waste collection. All of those items significantly higher, in particular flow of traffic on city streets, 64% compared to 37%. You do see some areas, overall condition of sidewalks, condition of streets and condition of major city streets that you're, you're lower. I would point out one thing, when you look at those type of categories of condition of major city streets, Des Moines in particular has a number of, of streets that are actually in other jurisdictions. They're either controlled by the county or by the, by the state or the feds. And so you, you, you do have sometimes, I just want a cautionary note to folks when, when we look at that condition of major city streets, sometimes the residents aren't always thinking in terms of, okay, is it really a city street in terms of maintenance or is it just a street within the city? And so in an area like that, I encourage you maybe to do a little bit more outreach with folks to make sure that we're really understand, they're really understanding and they're, they're rating your streets. Because you do see some variation when it looks, you look at, at streets in your neighborhood or it just how we describe these, but just want to point that out. Sometimes the, the residents or respondents can read things into it that we, we wouldn't necessarily think that they would. Next slide. Overall condition of, of major streets compared to your benchmarks. Thanks to Kansas City, Missouri, where I live, that's driving up the score of all the other cities there. Next slide. And that was tongue in cheek, but. Major findings, number, just our number three are trends from 2013 to 2020. Next slide. These are the areas where we've seen the, the largest long-term increases in satisfaction since 2013. Hours of libraries are open. I'm just going to kind of go through here, number of those with the libraries, but also with the parks, how quickly police responding to emergencies. And overall quality city parks, again, your parks are leading the way in terms of comparing to other cities that we benchmark you against. And those are trends, those are increases on a significant scale in the last seven years. So you can really see in some areas where you've made the investment of time and money and communication with your residents that it shows. Next slide. Yeah, I've had some areas where you're seeing since 2013, some decreases. Overall enforcement of city ordinances, which we talked about, condition of major city streets, which we talked about. And some of those other areas that would point the fact that, you know, these are much shorter lists than long-term increases. But still nonetheless, some areas that you want to continue to have conversations with and prioritize your investment efforts. Next slide. As I talked about priorities for investment, next slide. One of the things that ETC does is we look at all of the different ways that we have different questions. And so we may have three or four different questions that kind of speak to the same issue. And we look at a composite here and we assign a, a rating. And so we'll see as we go through here, you might have a very high priority, high priorities, medium priorities or low priorities. And that's just a function of when you, when we look at, is it important to the people and are they, how are they satisfied? So if it's that important satisfaction rank, if something jumps out as a very high priority, that's something that we would emphasize or, or encourage the city to focus on. And the area that jumps out here is visibility of police in neighborhoods. Again, your police ratings were very high and positive on the whole compared to other cities we're comparing you to. But if we're drilling down into the details here, we're saying that the citizens are telling us that, that it's very important and that they're not satisfied. So that all translates to being a very high priority. In an area we would suggest that you look at having continuing discussion. Next slide. And this is on the fire services. Unlike on the police services, you don't really see anything jumping out from the, from the report that says, okay, this is a very high or a high priority. Pretty much all these areas are kind of a medium priority in terms of the citizen. What, what does that mean? Because they're fairly satisfied and/or it's just not that important in terms of overall looking at the range of city services to the citizen. Doesn't mean these aren't important to do to continue to, to invest in, but just relative to everything else, is it a high priority? Next slide. Terms of parks and recreation, you do see a couple of items that are high priority. And those are the number of restrooms in city parks and the use of green practices in your parks. Next slide. We're switching to city communication. You have three very high level priorities, level of public investment and decision-making, availability of information about programs and services and cities' efforts to communicate with you. And the only thing I would say here is that we need to be cautious, given the time that we're in. We are seeing in other cities survey results that indicate some higher than normal concern with communication. A lot of that's due to COVID and just people, the timing of the survey itself, since your survey was conducted in that time period. I, I would, I would caution you to maybe look at this more deliberately and not just to jump to a conclusion that the city isn't communicating. It's just overall, we are seeing more concern with communication issues during this difficult time. Next slide. We look at public works and engineering services, couple of items jump out as very high priority. Conditions of major city streets and condition of streets in your neighborhood. I think we've already kind of discussed that. Also a high priority, snow removal in your neighborhood. And surely we won't have any major snowfalls during 2020. I mean, that would be piling on Mother Nature and I'm sure that wouldn't happen. Next slide. Terms of community development services, a very high priority enforcement of cleanup of dilapidated buildings and cleanup of litter and debris on private property. Again, that scale of very high priorities definitely would suggest those as, as points of focus for you. High priorities enforcement of the maintenance of rental homes, quality of redevelopment, removal of junk cars and how well the city is planning growth. Now it's interesting because earlier we said how well the city is planning growth and you saw a very positive rating relative to other cities. But it's still an issue for your citizens. And so they're very happy compared to other cities. But if you look at priorities, they're still saying, hey, we, we don't want to lose sight of this. Let's not rest on any laurels or whatever. We, we were happy with some of the things where we planned growth, but it's a continuing item that your citizens are telling you that they want to be looking at. Next slide. Look at the public libraries. Sort of like on the fire services, nothing really jumps out in terms of a very high priority or a high priority. Everything's sort of that medium priority level. Again, medium priority doesn't mean that it's, it's not important. It's just relative to other items and areas where the citizens do have concern. Next slide. This brings us to the summary. What I would say recounting these three points, residents are generally satisfied with the overall quality of services they receive from the city of Des Moines. Ratings for the city of Des Moines are generally higher than the national averages for cities of similar populations. And in the four areas there, we have seen substantial improvements when we look at trends. Improvements of police services, communication, street maintenance and community development. However, should be the ones that are the top priorities if the city wants to continue to see customer satisfaction ratings improve. So you have seen some substantial trend increases, positive things. But looking at those, those satisfaction indexes where we had the very high priorities, those are the four areas that we would suggest to you that you spend more time looking at and having that dialogue with the community. At this point, are there any questions?
Josh. So I was curious about the comparison cities. How, how did, how did those get selected and was that limited by the, the cities that you do this similar survey work for? So for example, if you didn't do work for a survey or for a city, they couldn't be on our comparison list for, for this purpose?
Yes, in terms of, of the, the regional benchmark cities, we, we had to use cities that we've done fairly recently. So that we, we believe we have an apples to apples comparison. And that, those are some of the cities that we drew on. We, we know that we've had feedback from your staff that there are some other cities that typically you might see yourself comparing to like Madison, Wisconsin, but we, we haven't done work with them for quite a while. And so didn't feel, feel that they would be a good comparison. And generally here, we also tried to, we tried to limit ourselves to kind of that Midwest, north, south Midwest sort of comparison.
Yeah, I mean, the cities that I, I had questions about or would, would be more interested. I mean, Kansas City is a pretty good comparison, Springfield, Missouri. But like the Omahaws, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, even in the bigger city context. I, so I was wondering if there were, were other cities that, that would have been maybe helpful, but but if you don't have recent survey data for them, it doesn't really matter.
Right. And, and we can continue to evaluate this every time we do one. So when we do one, do the resident survey in two years, we can hopefully look at, at the range of cities. That's something that your staff did express some sensitivity and desire about. And so you know, we'll, we'll be looking for that. It's just a timing thing. There are a number of cities that we would normally be surveying that decided to wait just because of the pandemic.
Is it the kind of thing that if those cities are, are in the field in the next year, we could get an update or just a comparison with, with those cities based on our, the, the survey that we just did?
Well, I, I can, I can have follow-up conversations with your staff about that. It's, it would be to my, to my thinking, it's just a matter of, okay, which, which cities are you interested in? And certainly we can provide you additional information about how they came out or provide a link to their surveys. But it would have to be something we discuss about. So I'm more clear on exactly what you're trying, you know, what your goal is. But obviously you're an important client to us. So any information we have that can help bring your results more into focus, we're, we're happy to talk about.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm concerned about the comparison cities. I mean, in some of the relevance, I mean, particularly when you get far enough south, you don't have the same weather conditions for roads even. Or the same weather impact, but, but they're also just demographically very different cities. I mean, I, I wouldn't consider Austin, Dallas or Fort Worth particularly comparable to, to Des Moines. I mean, even Nashville, Oklahoma City. So, so that comparison group, I'm really struggling with.
Okay. Well, I, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not sure if I can add anything else that would help ease that concern at this point. I mean, we, we were limited again to some degree by those cities that we have, but it's something that we're happy to continue to talk to your staff about. To see what other information or comparisons we can bring to the table.
Okay. This is Frank. I thought I'd better jump in here. We still haven't been able to allow everybody else in. Is that correct? So I think that we probably need to get that fixed. And this is, you know, actually a public meeting. And I think that probably we should reschedule it because I think our citizens need to get the opportunity to be able to hear this kind of, of information. this kind of of information. And quite frankly, I think the unfortunate situation of not being able to allow the citizens into the meeting would require us to, quite frankly, halt the meeting and reschedule.
I agree totally. We're going to have a lot of people unhappy if we don't. We have made an announcement on Facebook and other locations. We've also said that we would share the recording, but it doesn't meet all the requirements of an open meeting for sure.
Yep, well, I would agree and I, to everybody that's been on and and Robert, thank you so much for your input. I hope that we can reschedule and so that our citizens can get a a sense of of our overall condition of the work and and everything that we're doing and have done in and around the city of of Des Moines. Scott, any quick comment here?
No, I totally understand the need. We can talk about how to reschedule.
All right. And hopefully we can get it fixed for tonight. Otherwise, we're going to have to reschedule our regular city council meeting as well.
IT will start testing. They can't do a lot of things without the meeting being stopped. They will do that immediately and hopefully we'll have an answer and and be fine for this evening.
All right.
If I could, just real quick.
Please.
I just want to make clear for the record, we were under the mistaken impression that the meeting was still available on YouTube and the city cable channel, but apparently it was not available. So that's why we've stopped the meeting as we found out that it was not available for public participation through those avenues. I just want to make that clear on the on the record. So, thank you.
Do YouTube for work sessions? Maybe we'll have to consider it.
Connie, go ahead.
I just think that we should for work sessions, do YouTube. I think this is important information that people could see and go to later. I think some of the things we do in a work session, a lot of people can't get to, and I would encourage us to go reconsider putting it on YouTube.
Yep, we're doing it. Thank you, Connie. Scott?
I I'd be curious from Jeff. Close session would also be delayed, or do you want to get that message out to council?
At this point, I would say that the closed session would probably also need to be delayed, and I'll make individual calls to council members. But I think, I think the sooner we get off this meeting, the better, please.
Got it.
Yes, and and we won't know until I till they test and everything, Scott, that this won't work tonight. We'll get back to you as soon as possible.
All right, everybody. We're going to close this meeting down and we're going to do it right now. Thank, thanks, everybody for attending. Bye.